... the pledge, tell me the honor.
Sure.
Well, have a follow, tell me prayer today, Lord, and thank you for the day that you've given us, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today, Lord. Lord, we ask for guidance today, Lord. Be with this Lord as we make decisions and wisdom and knowledge as we continue to move forward in this institution. Be with everyone here today, Lord, we lift up in prayer, those not able to be here, those who are sickless, Lord, those that you know their needs, Lord, we lift those up in prayer every day. Once again, we thank God and bless us and we give you good rest. Latest guidance, directives, and all we do, all these things for we ask your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on. Uh, consideration of, oh, let's see, consideration and approval of the agenda? Trustee, Garrison makes a motion to approve the agenda. The second is by, what's that one? Mr. Featherson. All in favor, is it a voice vote? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number three, election of trustees, temporary ordinance of chair and secretary.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Wesley Payne as temporary chairman, and Melanie Decote as deputy as temporary secretary of the board trustees.
Motion made by Mr. Featherson. Is there a second?
A second.
By Mr. Williams. Uh, this is in a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, in accordance with the public school laws of Missouri, newly elected members of the board of trustees of the community college districts shall qualify by taking the oath of office, and I shall administer said oath. Dr. Richardson, if you will raise your right hand. Do you, Dr. Amber Richardson, solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Missouri, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of college trustee in and for the Three Rivers Community College District, Subdistrict One, A, State of Missouri, to the best of your ability according to law, so help you God.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Hager, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you, Dr. Tim Hager, solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Missouri, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of college trustee in and for the Three Rivers College, Community College District, Subdistrict Two, State of Missouri, to the best of your ability according to law, so help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Richardson. All right. In accordance with the public school laws of Missouri, the board of trustees shall organize by the election of the chairman and vice chairman, the secretary, and the treasurer, uh, as laid out at the April fifteenth, nineteen ninety-two meeting. So I would call for a nomination of officers as laid out in the book.
Certainly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Uh, motion carries. We are hereby reorganized. Everybody move on. Eric, new trustee, new trustee, new chair.
Old trustee.
Old trustee, new chair.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, anybody, any of the trustees like to make any comments on, uh, previous year or any comments on anything? Eric?
You know, for me, not saying anything would be just annoying, so I'm gonna, no, it was a very pleasant, pleasant year. Uh, we accomplished a lot, a lot more to go. Thank you all for your cooperation and, uh, and hard work. Let's keep up the good life.
In recognition and gratitude of your year as services chair, I'd like to present you with this chairman's plaque.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's see. We're on, uh, minutes. Consideration and approval of the March four meeting minutes.
How much approve the minutes as presented to us?
Uh, a motion by, uh, I'll get on here here in just a second. A motion by trustee Shaw, second. Trustee Richardson, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Consideration of college financial report, Charlie?
We'll start by looking at our comparison of year-to-date, uh, this year as of February compared to the same time in previous fiscal year. Uh, on the first page, looking at just revenue, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. Uh, the big story there is if you look at the federal and state grants categories, we had a number of grants last year that ended. Uh, so you're gonna see that, uh, throughout the fiscal year is a big difference from one year to the next. Uh, and then following that, looking at the expenses, again, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. And finally, looking at revenue minus expenses as our total change in that position, uh, again, you see this year quite a bit behind where we were last year, but that's because of those large grants that we had that ended in the previous fiscal year. So once you factor those out, it's very comparable. Following that, your next, uh, couple pages are just the details of those same numbers. And then looking at our budget to actual, uh, preliminary March numbers, so that's seventy-five percent into our fiscal year. We've, we've recognized about eighty percent of our revenues, so that's a very good point to be at in, uh, this fiscal year. We'll still have, um, some summer numbers to recognize in this fiscal year, uh, summer they split between two fiscal years. So you can see that we're sitting in a good spot there with our tuition fee numbers and, and so forth. And then on the bottom half of that page, looking at expenses, using that seventy-five percent sort of as a benchmark, you can see most of our categories are out or below, um, that, that mark with two exceptions in scholarships and student services, which are actually both scholarship-related, uh, because student services includes the athletic scholarships. So that's just a tiny difference in that it kind of tends to be chunked up in half and half this spring and fall. Um, so it runs a little bit ahead when we, this, or begin the spring semester. Following that, then, again, are just the details of those numbers. Uh, and then looking at our capital budget, you can see, uh, we don't have any just real active ones going on there. Uh, we're about to start work on the, uh, practice facility behind the Lively Sports Complex as soon as that gets, um, in the drive by contract, and then our, uh, the college will then pick up and do the interior work, uh, finishing that out. So we'll see that in future months. And then looking at our cash and banks report, if you flip over to the pie graph, uh, again, a very typical position to be in for this point in the fiscal year. Uh, this is as of the beginning of April. We don't have any other really major cash infusions until, uh, we get to the fall. We'll have a little bit coming in when we do summer aid, but that's always significantly smaller than this spring and fall. Following that, then, is our certificates of deposits. Um, you've seen the same five million dollar certificate with Peoples Bank in previous months, but we did renew it, which is, it's a three-month term, and we were able to renew it at an increased rate of five point six five percent. And then, uh, finally, we have our bid report. We did bid out our custodial services, and you'll see a sheet there that lays out the details of each of the bidders that, um, participated in our bid process. Uh, the low bid, uh, did come from our present provider, SG three sixty, and we are recommending that that contract be renewed, uh, at just under a twenty thousand dollar increase, uh, from our current cost. Uh, that's largely due to increased wages. So we'll be asking for, um, approval on that as well with your vote. Any questions?
Well, I kind of characterize eighteen million dollars in the bank as typical. That's a good thing.
Well, we want it to be typical, right?
Exactly, exactly. Typical. Anybody have questions, anything to add?
Uh, Charlie, can you give me a rundown or us run down our bonds, where we're at on our bond?
What's that?
We'll try to figure out security and.
Off the top of my head, um, yeah, I think they, our first group of, uh, would be the twenty sixteen series of bonds will become callable this coming year, but I'm not sure I can remember exactly which month it is. So, um, that's when we'll be looking at whether or not we want to try to pay off bonds. We will probably want to, we looked at the math before, just sort of hypothetically, as we approach those dates, but we'll probably want to revisit that because with interest rates going up, that's gonna change that, um, you know, the way that looks a little bit. So we'll, we'll need to balance, you know, what kind of rate are we getting on investments versus whatever we can respond. So when we get closer to that time, we'll be, uh, running that again.
And then you led into the next question, you know roughly what a carryoff is if it's wise. I know it's better, but we did, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, and we have those locked in at, at, we see them at low rates for, uh, today's rates. Um, so I, they're probably, we're riding about a million dollars a year.
Are we getting more on CD return than we are comparing the best of the bonds, though?
Yeah, they're pretty close.
Okay. I thought, I thought maybe it was stupid.
Yeah, so we're, yeah. It's, it's real, it's real close right now to being about even, and so, of course, you know, they're layered bonds, they're not all the same rate, but, um, but yeah, we're, we're closer, so we've been really watching those interest rates to see what they do.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Need for a motion to approve the finances?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say, Dr. Hager, second in my trustee, Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, I will call up Mr. Steve Whitworth, our artist-in-residence and art teacher, uh, to talk about our latest art exhibit. Mr. Whitworth?
Thank you for having me here. Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's Greg Edmondson. He's a single area artist. He's an abstract artist, and he's spent years, uh, studying the ebb and flow of the Gascogne River, and, and, uh, he's been impacted by four major floods, and it, you know, he breaks these down, he's an abstract artist, so he breaks these, uh, experiences down with, with geometric shapes. You know, you know, if you fly over, uh, an area and you see, uh, the plains and you see the way, uh, the topography is affected by flooding, I think he's inspired by that and the tragedy of that. So, uh, it's, he's quite an accomplished artist. He's, uh, MFA from, uh, from Washington University, BFA from, from, uh, Tennessee, and he studied in Europe. So he's, uh, he's kind of sophisticated on it, and he really, uh, if you're used to just representational art, it's always good to, uh, expose yourself to something like this, and, and it gives you really thinking about the other processes, and I'm sure you go see that it's really quite impressive, and we're looking at it here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitworth. Any questions? All right, now I'm gonna ask the Professor Swites to come forward and talk about the Misha District State Music Festival.
Hello, I'm Eddie Black, and I was called as March Music Madness, and it's kind of that earlier. Uh, so this is held March twenty-first and twenty-second, uh, our district music festival arts ensemble day, so that's the focus of. Uh, we had two hundred and eighty-four band students, uh, in eight bands, and three hundred and eighty-three choir students in fourteen choirs for that one-day total of six hundred and sixty-seven students. And this was a state-level event. This is as far as those roots can go. Everyone's trying for that top rating, but I think everyone did a great job. Everyone sold recovery from COVID, but we have a strong, I think we have a strong recovery going on. And I introduced every band on our stage. I talked to every director. I talked to every student. So they certainly know us, and Cindy will introduce the vote.
Our second day of the event.
Oh, it's a solo.
Was the solo and small ensemble day on March twenty-second. That's a district-level event, so students that compete and earn the highest rating there then can go on to, um, Missouri State University, you know, the University of Missouri Columbia to compete at the state level. Uh, we had three hundred and fifty total entrance, uh, entries. Some of those are ensembles, so that was a total of one thousand seventeen students for that day.
And to prepare for this, uh, day, we previously called a high school band festival. That was in March sixth, because we had three hundred and sixty-four students in nine bands. So, that's one thousand three hundred and eighty-one total students, uh, for March, and I'm still counting numbers. Uh, I climbed sixty-three flights of steps. I didn't take the elevator. I walked sixty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-three steps. Should've gotten more and hit sixty-five thousand, but I only know. For a total of one point six point two miles, uh, during this festival, and I could do it again today. I'm a miracle of science right here. There's one month and four days since my transplant.
And I wasn't walking, I was talking. I was inter, entering all of the ratings into the computer system that the Missouri State Hospital Activities Association provides to us, um, setting up, managing, asking, answering lots of questions, uh, taking care of equipment, um, solo, small ensembles, finding music that someone might have forgotten. So I, I had a totally different role that day.
But if you're ever gonna walk twenty-six miles.
Could be.
Hey, sorry, we did. And every one of our music department students helped, uh, during these festivals as room monitors, uh, runners, moving equipment. It's a learning and a serving experience for them, and it's a, it's always, uh, we enjoy somewhat seeing our students who are now, uh, teachers or participating in this, uh, festival as adults. And how many do you have?
I tried to do a rough count during the day, the days that we were doing it. I estimated that there were at least nine Three Rivers College alumni that were involved, either as accompanists or directors. Some of those nine also went through our Central Methodist University two plus two. Um, it was a humbling experience when I realized that when I walked out in the hallway, I was hugging people, and I thought, oh, we touched your life, we touched your life, and now you're touching the lives of all these students as well. So it, it was kind of a nice summary. Someone's gotta should've taken a picture, but they're never there all at the same time. So I, I should've taken a picture throughout the day, I suppose, but I, again, my fingers were doing the walking a lot of the time.
We need a drone to follow.
So we had, uh, fourteen hospital choirs from Bloomfield, Madison County Central, Clearwater, Donovan, Dexter, Kennett, and Papa Wuff.
And the bands were, uh, to be fair, a couple of, uh, of the New England counties, uh, Central, Dexter, East Carter, Hudson, Kennett, who was so proud, they're back, and they have a nice solid band group again, which I told them. And, uh, one of our, uh, students is now the, the director, and it's been fine, though. Is it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm gonna ask Coach Alex Wiggs, oh, wait. First, we're going to have Professor Mark Sanders talk about the spelling bee.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me here today. Uh, March twenty-third is our fifteenth annual Three Rivers College Southeast Missouri Regional Spelling Bee. Three Rivers for the past fifteen years has been an official sponsor of Strick's National Spelling Bee, and, uh, you have, uh, our event program, uh, from, to, from the event. Uh, our winner this year was Scott Tingle. He's a seventh grader from Seanford Whindersville Middle School. This was his first time competing at the regional level, and he won the entire competition. His championship word was hierogram, which means a sacred emblem or graphic symbol, like a cross or a star, David, would be a hierogram. Uh, this was the twelfth round of the competition and the ninth round of our championship rounds. Uh, our second-place finisher, uh, was a local student, Lacy Cofer. She's a fifth grader from Papa Wuff Middle School. And third place went to Abigail Nguyen, an eighth grader from Donovan Middle School. So, uh, Scott will be representing Three Rivers and Southeast Missouri in Washington, DC, the week of May twenty-seventh at the Strick's National Spelling Bee. And I think he's got a really good chance, uh, to advance far in the competition. He never seemed nervous or unsure about any of the words, uh, that he spelled. Uh, we had twenty-five students from fifteen different area middle and elementary schools representing, I think, about nine in Southeast Missouri counties, uh, this year. Uh, our other championship round finalists were Taylor Robinson from Kennett, Anthony Gracia from Lakewood Elementary, Olivia Bell from Pinnyskow County, our three, Ethan Duncan from Carruthersville, Owen Sage from Malden, and Connor Jackson, also from Pinnyskow County, so we've got a wide representation, uh, throughout our service, uh, area. I'd like, uh, to thank the college and the board for their continuing support, uh, of our sponsorship. That entails entry into the competition, the, the fees for that, the week-long stay in National Harbor, Maryland, uh, for our finalists. I also want to thank our, uh, local business and organization sponsors, including Gambler Lumber, Southern Bank, Kennedy, Robbins, Yarborough, and Henson, uh, law firm, Papa Wuff Rotary Club, Eastside Discount Pharmacy, Live Family Industry, InstaCredit, and Encore, Encore Rentals of Fredricktown. Those community supports are what allow us to fund sending the second parent along. We're contractually obligated for the winner and one parent, and our community donations mean that we can send most of the family, uh, along with that, so it makes it a real, uh, special, uh, experience. So, uh, like, uh, like the, the whites mentioned, we're glad that we're through the COVID things and the, uh, the, the virtual competition and the masks that was difficult to get through. Uh, so once again, we're grateful for your support and happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think it's a standing tradition for the chairman of the board to attempt the winning word of the spelling, you know?
Am I spelt right during the term?
No. How was the winning word spelled? Let's do that.
Uh, hierogram, H-I-E-R-O-G-R-A-M.
See, I would have had it.
And I probably, I have it wrong.
I would have had two weeks in. We lost one. Yeah.
Thank you, Professor Sanders, for the dedication to this and all the work that you put into it. It's very well done, and I know everyone appreciates your efforts as we do.
Thank you, Dr. Ken. Appreciate it.
And now I'm gonna call Coach Alex Wiggs to come forward and talk about the Women's Apairance at the NJCAA National Tournament.
Well, we, uh, spent seven days, uh, Casper, Wyoming. If you've never been, I, I wouldn't say no. Uh, it, it, it was a cool experience. Uh, but it was scenery, it snowed, uh, four days, seven days, fifty mile an hour winds, and about thirty-seven degrees. So lovely. We had, most of our team had seen snow, you know, we played some teams that hadn't seen snow for the first time, and, and the cold and all that stuff. But, uh, no, really great year. Uh, twenty-nine and five overall. Uh, we were one game away from, or one win away from breaking the school record. The school record is, we tied it, it's twenty-nine wins in the regular season. Uh, we had St. Louis Community College cancel the game during the year, uh, so unfortunately, we're not able to do that for this team. But made an Elite Eight run. Uh, we beat Mississippi Gulf Coast seventy-three to sixty-four, uh, first round. In the Sweet Sixteen, we beat Shell State, uh, sixty-eight to fifty, and then lost in the Elite Eight to Northwest Florida State, sixty-nine to fifty-four. Northwest Florida State ended up getting second, so they lost in the championship game to Hutchinson Community College. Uh, this team accomplished a lot of great things this year. Uh, as you see, Dakaria Jackson, second team All-American. We had four first-team All-American, or four first-team All-Region players this year. Uh, Dakaria Jackson was Player of the Year, and then Kaylee Thompson, Alexia Weaver, and Leyla Reese were all first-team members as well. All three of them are coming back. They're all freshmen, so they'll be back next year. And then we had two second-team All-Region players, freshman Jasmine, or Jasmine Davis, and then sophomore Maya Davidson. Uh, this team, uh, like I said, we got twelve returners for next year's team, so hopefully, uh, we'll be making another trip to Casper, Wyoming. Uh, they get it for two years, and then hopefully, it's moving from Casper, Wyoming. Uh, but like I said, this team accomplished a lot. Uh, they were first in the nation in blocks, uh, block shots, uh, third in the nation in free throws made, ninth in the nation in steals, thirteenth in the nation in scoring, uh, eighth in the nation in defensive field goal percentage, eighth in the nation in defensive three-point percentage, and fourteenth in the nation in defensive points allowed per game. So a lot of great accomplishments for this team. Uh, the three sophomores, we actually have one at University of Denver, uh, right now. Uh, and so they haven't made decisions yet on the three sophomores, on where they're going, but, but it's Louisiana Tech, Illinois State, uh, University of Denver, several schools out there that they are narrowing it down to, uh, so we have to watch them on TV and do that stuff for a while. So, so really, really proud of this group. Uh, can't thank you guys enough. Obviously, Tim got to go with Voice of the, Voice of the Raiders, when Lady Raiders, uh, so we appreciate your guys' support. We know it's not cheap, uh, sending, sending twenty-five people plus the cheerleaders and their, their group out there. Uh, but we really appreciate everything and the support, and hopefully, hopefully, uh, you know, made everybody proud by, by their accomplishments. So thank you guys, and answer any questions you guys may have.
Great job. Keep it up.
I have a question. Who was the region sixteen coach of yours? Uh, I was.
Thank you. Uh, and we recently, on April third, finished our latest mini-series. This one was How to Stop a Sociopath. Uh, so our presenters were Jessica Bishop, Dr. Marit Ryan Anderson, and N W Ken. This is part of our ongoing, uh, programming from Mr. Corey Reynolds, our Rehagio Health Services Program Director, and this one was well-attended and integrated into the community very well. Uh, and now I would ask Dr. Melissa Douglas to come forward and talk about Liberal Arts Week twenty twenty-four.
Good afternoon. Our, our Liberal Arts Week became Liberal Arts Day because of the eclipse event, so we kind of consolidated three different events. We had the poetry slam, which happened, uh, April fourth that evening, in which we unveiled our newest edition of poems, which is our creative writing publication that the English Department puts out each year. And you all have a copy of this in the president's office if you would like one. Uh, we had, I would say, about thirty to forty participants, uh, some of which actually read their favorite poetry, or they read their actual selection from the confluence magazine. So we were very proud of our faculty and students that participated in that. Our second event was the artist reception for Mr. Greg Edmondson, which, um, Mr. Whitworth just mentioned about his work. Uh, we had visitors that came to the art gallery all the way from Illinois, Kansas City, St. Louis. It was really well-attended, and he was very, very grateful for the chance to come down and be a part of our campus. He had a lot of compliments about the campus, that it was beautiful, and we appreciated him coming. And lastly, I asked the whites to stay because we had the student showcase, uh, where our students had the opportunity to get on stage and show us what they learned throughout the year. And, uh, do you want to say anything about that?
A little bit of, okay. Boss lady?
Yes.
So we had a total of twenty-four students that performed. This is on Tuesday, April fourth. They performed a variety of solo vocal instrumental and ensemble selections. I chose the purple color, one of sixty-eight billion colors we've been on our site for, more power than this finger. And it's right here, and when I call back, I'm like, I'll stop, I'll stop. And, uh, students are taught by myself, Cindy, Cindy, Dr. Dan, who is our piano whiz. Uh, instructors are also accompanied by many of our students. And, uh, yeah, it was a good night.
Thank you for your continued support. We appreciate it. We have a lot of our faculty to produce the account to be so. Any questions? But I think I said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. And on April 8th, we were very happy to be able to participate in the eclipse activities here in Hopper Bluff. So we had three lectures. First, astronaut Tom Akers was here, then PhD candidate Isaac Glassner. He's a PhD candidate in astrophysics. And our very own Dr. Tom Arson, uh, Dr.? Yeah, hang on, Dr. Paul Larson. Apologize for that, we were just talking about former school administrator Tom Larson, and those merged together. So Dr. Paul Larson was here, did a wonderful job with that. And then everyone was able to go outside and experience the eclipse. We also had an honors class around the eclipse that Professor Michelle Fisher put on, and it was eclipse soundscapes. So they collected scientific quality data during the eclipse as part of their research on how solar eclipses affect natural sound landscapes and the behavior of plants and animals. The students used multisensory observation methods in the field, including using audio lof devices to collect soundscape data. So we played an important role in the educational aspect of the eclipse event. And 20 years from now, we'll do it again. So glad to be part of that. Then on April 11th, we were able to hold the college transfer fair. This is where we invite other colleges and universities to come in and speak to our students about progressing on after graduation. We had 10 universities and colleges and dozens of students come back to secure their path forward. And then on April 16th, we held the job fair, Career Expo. As you can see, we held that around the concourse of the Library and Family Sports Complex, had a huge number of vocal employers, and educational programs spotlighting. And many, many people participated in this event and avail themselves of the opportunity to either continue their education or to find employment. So very successful event. And then going on right now is the University Center Open House. So this is our students' opportunity to stop by the open house for the University Center, learn what the University Center does, and get a head start on their futures. So a lot of things going on in the previous month here at Three Rivers College as we run through the spring semester. Some upcoming events, tomorrow night, the Last Patents of the Arts performance, an evening with Mark Twain. This is sponsored by Dillon Arts Group. Tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, tickets still on sale, $15 each, and they are going quickly. So if you want to enjoy this incredible performance, be sure to get your tickets. Then the high school exhibit will be here April 22nd through May 17th at the Tennen Gallery, that's free admission to all. And this is an art show by area high school students. So thank you again, Mr. Whitworth, for curating. Music Bingo is coming up on April 26th, so it's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Bass Activity Center, free for all Three Rivers College students with a valid ID and $5 for non-students, faculty, and the general public. Then State Fairly Musical, put on by the Whites and Sheri Mitchell, April 26th through the 28th. It is at the Tennen Theater, 7:00 PM on 26th and 27th, 2:00 PM on the 28th. Then May 3rd, we will hold our annual employee watching, that begins at 11:00, and then we will be closed for the day thereafter. And on May 6th, we will have our distinguished alumni, Dr. Sonia DeSaro. Her reception will be May 6th, Monday, 4:30 PM in the Tennen Fine Arts Center lobby. Dr. DeSaro is a nursing graduate with Three Rivers College, went on to have a long career as a nurse practitioner, finished her doctorate in nursing, and is now serving as faculty for a online university. Then our retirement reception was.
All right, let's go. Sit down. Get this rolling.
Tim and Chris, and use those first names.
Trustee Tim, trustee Chris, let's finish this up. Number eight, consideration to vote for FY25 board of trustee meeting dates, discussion.
I would approve the dates as presented.
Motion made by trustee Eric.
Tim will second that.
Motion by trustee Tim.
Roll call vote. Trustee Featherstone?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Much better.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. All right, consideration to vote for FY25 holiday schedule. Discussion. Call for a motion.
Still moved.
Trustee Garrett makes the motion. Trustee Amber makes the second.
Trustee Featherstone?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Tim says yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Consideration to vote on benefits for fiscal year 2025.
Each year, we work with our benefit provider. And what you see presented in the board book is the layout of all of the benefits. There are no significant changes. We did add a new plan, it's a zero deductible plan that works a little different, that's fairly innovative. And we are going through the signup process now.
Is that the one that said you had to have so many people sign up to do it?
Yes, we've, we believe we're going to hit the render.
Did you hear? Motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
Motion by trustee Featherstone.
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Hager.
Roll call vote, trustee Featherstone?
Aye.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Thank you.
Consideration approval of all personnel actions and associated documents.
Welcome back to the seat there.
Any discussion, Eric?
I think I would like to make a motion to approve all personnel and associated documents that are attached.
Great motion, trustee Shaw.
Thank you, sir.
I'll say it.
Great second, trustee Richardson.
Roll call, trustee Featherstone?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yep.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Acceptance, well, we've already done that.
Mm-hmm. German.
Thought maybe it's Eric second and something. Call for motion to adjourn.
So.
I'll second.
Aye.
None of those.
Aye.
It's outstanding service, not.